Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, February 7, 2017. It is 9 o'clock. We are going to begin this morning with the flag salute led by our illustrious county council Gerald Cardin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, Jerry. Thank you. All right. We are going to move to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the county executive department, and all items normally are approved by a single roll call vote. However, anyone may ask to address any consent item prior to the board taking action, and we may move that off consent for discussion. I will make two notes on this. We will be convening as the in-home support services public authority for item 17B, and I am going to pull item 13B from consent, which is asking us to consider the location for the Tuesday, February 21, 2017 meeting of Board of Supervisors. Are there any other agenda items that any member of the board would like to pull for discussion? It's supplemental? Yep. Is there any member of the public who has anything on consent that they would like to be pulled for discussion? Okay, seeing none. All right, so move approval in second for the remaining items other than 13B. This is a roll call.
Holmes?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Wygant? Euler? Montgomery?
Yes. We will move now to item 13B. This is, we're being asked to consider the location for Tuesday, February 21, 2017 meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Terry Evaldi, are you going to be presenting this? I see her name on here. David, please, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The question before the board is whether or not to first convene your regular meeting up in Tahoe as indicated on your calendar. We only have but one Tahoe-oriented item on that agenda, the North Star Master Plan, which was approved or recommended for approval by the Planning Commission last week. And so then, there's also requests to recognize Sheriff Bonner upon his imminent retirement, and to do that back down here the afternoon of the 21st. And so, we were looking for board guidance as to whether we should just relocate the regular meeting down here as well for board convenience and to avoid any weather conflicts that we might have this time of year.
Okay. And if I may, just as a little bit of background, the Planning Commission did hear this. There were nine comments, nine commenters during the Planning Commission meeting. Five of them were fully in favor of the Mountain Master Plan. The other four had some, what I would characterize as, specific concerns, some of which I believe planning and the project proponent were going to address directly. We do have the live interactive feed, Hello Tahoe, where people can actually participate live in real time with the board. So, my feeling is, I think, having this meeting here in Auburn actually does make a great deal of sense in this instance. So, I'll leave it to the rest of my board members to add anything to that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem playing in the snow myself, but I don't know if we should be shuttling everybody up to Tahoe for one item. You know, I think the cost, it's cost prohibitive, so.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Do we have any more discussion? Do we have a motion?
Move approval. Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Again, roll call.
Holmes?
Hi.
Duran?
Yes.
Euler? Montgomery?
Yes. Terrific. Thank you. We're now going to move to public comments. This is the time that anyone may address the board on any item not on today's agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Time allocated for public comment is 15 minutes. If it should extend beyond 15 minutes, we will take it up again at the end of the board meeting. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board under public comment? Please come forward and identify yourself. Good morning.
My name's Tomas Evangelista, and I just wanted to take the time to come and address the Board of Supervisors about our growing concern in our community. I'm not sure if you've heard, but I've been speaking out the past couple of weeks on this issue, and the issues on the fear within our Latino community regarding immigration. First, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a 20-year Placer County resident. I grew up in this beautiful area. I grew up specifically in Auburn. I've had the chance to go through Lincoln, Rillsville, Granite Bay, and everywhere else in this county, and I wouldn't want to live anywhere else. And to give you a little bit of background, let me tell you another story. The night of the election, I have the pleasure of facilitating a classroom of young children ages seven to 12, and on the night of the election, I was with them. And this is a group of individuals that are Latino, and they're part of our program that helps parents learn how to better manage their kids. And so, the night of the election, something very alarming happened. I noticed a lot of fear within the children. They, classes from six to eight, and they were asking me every 10 minutes for the election results. And I was, I also too wanted to know the election results, so I kept on telling them. And of course, they wanted to know the results because of the fear of our now-president's words regarding undocumented immigration. Some of these kids were worried, I'm not sure because of themselves, or because of their family members that are undocumented. And it was something that was hard to watch, just because every 10 minutes I'd let them know about the results, and of course, we all know the results. And I, a lot of them asked me, "What's going to happen? What's going to happen with our family?" And I couldn't, I couldn't tell them, because I also didn't know I had my own fears. I'm a DACA. I'm a DACA, which stands for Production for Charter Arrivals. I was brought here as a young little boy, two years old. And so, I didn't have an immigration status growing up until this executive action by Barack Obama. And it's given me a lot of opportunity. It's given me a lot of opportunity to work in the community, to help everyone that's here. And, but most importantly, it released the fear of being deported one day. And so, I'm hoping that we can continue addressing this issue within our community, and that the Board of Supervisors can help us with at least their words, or their assurance that, that nothing will happen with these children or their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Tomas. And if I may, I'd be happy to facilitate a meeting between yourself and our representatives of our Sheriff's Department to talk about what their policy is, what it isn't, and expectations for the future. So, please contact me directly if you would. Thank you. Please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Sharon Sailing, and I live in Applegate, California. It's a little small community. We have maybe 300 population. I'm really concerned about our library, and we've already closed two, and I believe that's the only two that closed last year in the entire state of California. That's really a shame. I'm really concerned about our library and any other library that might be impacted by the lack of funds and the budget. We are collecting signatures. We're actually, I've collected over 100 postcards, which is not necessarily 100 people, because I've seen as many as six people that are represented on these postcards. We also have petitions that we're collecting that we're going to be presenting you. But I'm begging, pleading, whatever else it is, and hopefully, we can have more money put in the library budget. We'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Is there anyone else who would like to speak under public comment? I see member of the public, Tim Wagner. Please come forward.
Good morning, Chairman Montgomery, and members of the board. Tim Wagner over here from Cedra, just to share some great news with you today. That is, that last week, we flipped the switch for online permitting, and so that means that our licensed contractors here in the state, or here in the county are able to achieve roofing permits, re-roofing permits, water heater changeout permits, solar permits, window changeouts, plumbing, mechanical, electrical permits, all online now. It's a great offering for our community. We look forward to expanding that over the next couple of months to include master permits for those subdivision projects, as well as homeowner availability to obtain these same permits. So, with that, I just wanted to do a shout out to the Cedra staff who put this together, to Kelly Berger, Jeff Thomas, Gabe Armstrong, and the Cedra techs, Tracy Hino, Michelle Paris, Patrick Hoffman, and Carol Barber for all their efforts in getting this up and running. And with that, I want to thank your board for this opportunity to share this great news.
And if someone wanted to go online to apply for one of these online permits, what website would they go to?
That's a great question. So, they go to the Placer County website, and they can visit the Community Development Department, and within there, they'll see Building Services, and from the Building Services main page, right up top in our new, our new box, there's a link that directs you right over to the online system.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the time.
Is there anyone else who would like to make comments under public comment? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comments. Going to bring this back to the board for board member reports. Is there any board member with a report today?
I don't know.
Okay. I do have one thing that I just wanted to mention. Many of you are probably aware that there was an attack on a mosque in the city of Roseville last week. And speaking for myself, I hope my fellow board members agree, hate crimes of any kind are not welcome in Placer County. And we here in Placer County are welcoming to all law-abiding citizens, and want to make sure that people understand that there is no room for that kind of hate crime behavior in Placer County. Not speaking for the rest of my board or for the county formally, but really just wanted to go on record, because it's just not the way we behave as citizens of Placer County. So, that's it for that. We will now move to our first timed item, which is our Human Resources Department, the 2016 County Employee Service Awards. Lori Walsh will be presenting this item. Normally, David Bosch would be joining me and Lori down to hand these out, but David is sick, so he's going to sit here and partake in my cough drops, but I will come down and join Lori after her initial presentation. Please take it away.
Thank you, and good morning. It's my privilege to introduce this item on your agenda as we recognize employees for their years of service to the county. While we dedicate this morning's presentation to employees whose careers have spanned over 25, 30, and 35 years, I wanted to note that we already recognize those employees with 20 years of service when we met just a week ago, and award recipients were presented with their awards by CEO Bosch and Board Chair Montgomery out of the Cedra building. We needed to do that because we have so many recipients, and so we separate these events. But in addition to recognizing employees that have served in excess of 25 years today, we will also recognize department heads who have achieved service ward milestones. As each recipient is called to receive their award, please note the PowerPoint presentation, including those brave souls that provided now-and-then photos from a date when they were hired to the present day. And speaking of photos, we will ask each award recipient to stop for a photo with the CEO and Board Chair as they receive their award. An opportunity for a group photo with family, friends, and coworkers during the reception following the ceremony will also be held out in the lobby. And before we get started, I'd also like to express my thanks to the staff this morning who braved the elements, who carried in the cakes and the awards, protecting them to keep them from getting wet. Thank you, Janice Nelson. Thank you, Wendy Brodnick. Thank you, Amy Pearson. Appreciate all your good work. The award recipients we honor today were hired into county service between 1981 and 1991. And to gain some perspective on the length of time that represents, here are some benchmark occasions during that time period. Our 25-year award recipients began their county employment in 1991, when the minimum wage went from $3.80 an hour to $4.25 an hour. Baseball Hall of Fame banned Pete Rose, and the World Wide Web was two years old. Our 30-year award recipients began their county employment in 1986. 6.5 million people held hands from California to New York in the Hands Across America event. The Oprah Winfrey Show was first broadcast nationally. Lady Gaga was born. (laughter) And the movie Top Gun premiered. Our 35-year award recipients began their county employment in 1981. The average cost of a new house was $78,000, with an interest rate of 15%. The average annual income was $21,000 a year. And Lady Di married Prince Charles. The ensuing years to the present day are the years that each of these employees we honor today committed to their public service, and the reason for our ceremony this morning. So, if you would, Board Chair Montgomery, if you would come down and make the presentation. And I believe Eric is ready, willing, and able to take photos of each recipient.
Eric?
He's here.
He's hanging out back in the lane.
I know he is.
Yeah.
So, our first award recipient is our department head Troy Held, who celebrates 10 years of county service. Congratulations to Troy.
(applause) Sorry. Eric is coming. We hear he's in.
En route.
On route.
Well, he's on his way. Can I put Troy on the spot real quick and ask him, is that, how many total years of county-related service do you have here, elsewhere?
Yes, and then about a half a year before that.
And the DAs, and all the others.
There was that time in jail. Totally personal.
Makes it 14 years.
Yeah. Have we got a photographer coming up? Sorry.
Great.
Thank you.
And now, our 25-year award recipients, beginning with Scott Blodger.
All right. Congratulations.
Robert Dawson.
Dawson. And I don't have my glasses on, so I'm assuming these have the correct name on them. If they don't, please let me know. Congratulations.
Selma Duffy. Oh, here's a before and after.
I think she looks better today, don't you?
I do, too.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Kenneth Ferrara.
No, Kenneth.
Kenneth, not here. Robin.
What's that? Stuck in the snow. Oh, come on.
Robin Guthrie.
All right. I know, the obligatory photo.
Kelly Hernandez.
Kelly, also stuck in the snow. All right.
Thomas Maroy. Stuck in the snow.
Linda Masters.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Michael Mathie. Great.
He's a really good hugger.
I don't know.
In case anyone needs a hug.
Making HR a little nervous. Randy Owens. Oh, wait, we missed Rosalina. Rosalina McLaughlin.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good to all. Thank you.
Now Randy Owens.
Now Randy Owens. Am I allowed to say I love a man in a uniform? Really, I meant my husband is a firefighter, so. Congratulations.
Dee Parks. Oh, that's great. That's so nice. Is Dee here?
She's not here. Finally.
Jeffrey Potter. Jeff Potter.
Don't look so miserable. Thank you.
Nidia Rusi.
That's great. All right.
Broke the camera.
We got it? We did not break the camera. The camera loves us.
John Savage.
I'll join here somewhere. Again, another one who's really held up well over time. Congratulations.
Pat Thompson. Is Pat here? No, no. No, okay. Oh, has the flu down here. Glenn Thompson. Bill Walton.
Bill Walton, I did not see him here today. We will make sure he gets this.
And Jane Expolius.
Thank you.
And now, our 30-year award recipients, beginning with Jeff Khan. Kathy Sissiger-Areli. Is Kathy not here? Did I see Lauren Clark? I do see.
I see Lauren Clark. He's retired, by the way.
Right. Julie Clavin.
Don't you love someone who comes with their own cheerings? No, they surprised me.
Elizabeth Emright.
Got it?
Stephen Layton.
Steve's retired.
He's retired. Okay.
Well, he has nothing better to do than be here today. He's retired. Come on.
Daniel Olson.
Dan's retired, too. Okay, I'm sensing a trend.
The one and only Kelly Torbell. The perks of working in HR.
Yes.
And Jeff Tudor.
Thank you.
We have two 35-year award recipients this morning. I hope they're here. Catherine Harley.
We're all trying to.
And Michelle Krieger.
Not here.
Thank you all for joining us this morning. There is a reception with cake and coffee in Conference Room 1. So, we'll find our way back there, but thank you to the board for this time to recognize our valuable employees.
And before y'all leave, any comments from any members of my board? Congratulatory wishes? Don't let the doors?
No, I just want to say thank you to all of you. We could not do what we do on behalf of the citizens of Placer County and the region without your excellent help, guidance, tutelage, mentoring. Thank you.
I just want to let you know I'm a friend of the board.
And everyone else, by the way. Supervisor Euler?
Yeah, just, we are known statewide, and in fact, regionally, among several other states, for the outstanding customer service, the innovation, and it starts in our workplace. We have employees who are committed to delivering a high level of service regardless of the economic times, and you folks are so dedicated to your mission, and that innovation, that drive to serve is innate. It's within you. I'm glad that we have managers, we have leaders that foster an environment that allows for that, but really, it comes right back down to who's actually delivering the service to the people who pay for it, and that's you people. And so, thank you very much for what you do day in and day out.
Absolutely. And I'll just say that it's absolutely my pleasure to work with each and every one of you. I feel so lucky to have such an incredible, talented, dedicated group of folks that I work with. I talk to other county supervisors from throughout the state, and frankly, after talking to them, I feel incredibly fortunate to work and live in Placer County. So, go have cake, have a great time. Thank you all, and we'll see some of you 25-year folks back here in five years, and, you know, on and on. Thank you. Yeah, I'll wait just a few minutes to let the chaos aside. Cough drops? Okay. None of those hippie cough drops, man. Oh, look, it's an empty room. Yeah. Andy Sisk, that first auditor.
Stephen Layton.
Steve's retired.
Steve's retired, okay.
Well, he has nothing better to do than be here today. He's retired, come on.
Daniel Olson.
Dan's retired too, okay. I'm sensing a trend.
The one and only Kelly Torbell. The perks of working in HR.
Yes.
And Jeff Tudor.
Thank you.
We have two 35-year award recipients this morning. I hope they're here. Kathryn Harley. And Michelle Krieger.
Not here. All right.
Thank you all for joining us this morning. There is a reception with cake and coffee in Conference Room One. So we'll find our way back there, but thank you to the board for this time to recognize our valuable employees.
And before y'all leave, any comments from any members of my board? Congratulatory wishes? Don't let the doors...
No, I just want to say thank you to all of you. We could not do what we do on behalf of the citizens of Placer County and the region without your excellent help, guidance, tutelage, mentoring. Thank you.
I just want to let you know I'm a friend of working people.
And everyone else, by the way. Supervisor Yular?
Yeah, just, we are known statewide and in fact, regionally, among several other states, for the outstanding customer service, the innovation, and it starts in our workplace. We have employees who are committed to delivering a high level of service regardless of the economic times, and you folks are so dedicated to your mission, and that innovation, that drive to serve is innate, it's within you. I'm glad that we have managers, we have leaders that foster an environment that allows for that, but really, it comes right back down to who's actually delivering the service to the people who pay for it, and that's you people. And so, thank you very much for what you do day in and day out.
Absolutely. And I'll just say that it's absolutely my pleasure to work with each and every one of you. I feel so lucky to have such an incredible, talented, dedicated group of folks that I work with. I talk to other county supervisors from throughout the state, and frankly, after talking to them, I feel incredibly fortunate to work and live in Placer County. So go have cake, have a great time, thank you all, and we'll see some of you 25-year folks back here in five years, and, you know, on and on. Thank you. Yeah, I'll wait just a few minutes to let the chaos aside. Cough drops? Okay. None of those hippie cough drops, man. Oh, look, it's an empty room. Yeah. Andy Sisk, that first auditor. That was quite the cheering squad. Okay, we're going to be moving to our first department item. This is Item Six, Auditor's Office, Placer County Fraud Reporting and Whistleblower Program Policy. Andy Sisk, welcome and good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairwoman Montgomery, members of the board, David, Jerry. Back in fiscal 1415, the grand jury had done a review of city and county operational policies, and one of the things that actually came out of that report was a recommendation that the auditor controller implement a whistleblower policy in a reporting form that should be developed. That report actually was very favorable to the county. We received a lot of positive comments in that report because of the great policies we had in place, but this was one area that the grand jury wanted a little more emphasis. Government Code 53087.6 basically allows the county auditor to maintain a whistleblower hotline to receive calls. That was initiated back in 1995. Many of my colleagues at the time did not jump on implementing a fraud hotline because you need staffing resources to do that. The first couple counties that did start to turn on a whistleblower hotline were, of course, LA County and Orange County, and we may recall that Orange County was going through bankruptcy in 1994. LA County has a staff of 60 internal auditors, so they have the means to take those type of phone calls on a day-to-day basis. We at Placer County actually had a fraud policy, it was in our Internal Control Standards Manual, so one of the things we did is we removed that policy out of our Internal Control Standards Manual after the report from the grand jury, and basically made it a fraud reporting policy. That then gave employees a mechanism to send emails to the Internal Audit Division to report fraud, waste, and abuse. As you can imagine, we are not getting any emails because of the confidentiality of it. So we're now taking it to the next level, and we are ready to turn on a whistleblower hotline. We've developed some procedures. In front of you, in your board packet, you have the policy. That policy was vetted through the sheriff, the district attorney, HR director, county council, and the county executive office. I did get feedback. This policy is also supported by the audit committee. The primary objective is to provide a means for county employees to confidentially report any allegations of fraud, waste, or abuse committed against county government. Now, this presentation is getting a little dry, so I better throw some numbers into this presentation. According to the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, the number-one detection for fraud is a fraud hotline, is through tips, and that is 40%. The second-best way to discover fraud would be having an internal audit unit, 16.5%. You would think external audit is the best way to find fraud, and that's actually down very low at 3.8%, but just turning on this hotline and having the internal audit unit, which we appreciate the support of the board and the audit committee, and then our external audit, we hopefully will capture 60% of fraud, waste, and abuse that's going on in Placer County. The next step for us is to enter into a contract with a third-party, independent third-party to provide a 24-hour hotline and an online reporting form. This has been the challenge for some of the medium-sized to smaller-sized counties that don't have a robust internal audit unit like LA County. And so, this is going to be a mechanism to allow employees to call a hotline anonymously, and then we will be getting probably daily, weekly reports. We do plan to report back out to the audit committee semi-annually and to the board annually on how this is taking off. This is kind of Phase One. We'll kind of see how it rolls out, we'll see what kind of traction we get from our county employees, then the next step would be to open it up to the public. I know my board memo says there is no fiscal impact to the general fund, there was an oversight there, there is a very small impact of $6,500 to enter into the contract with the third-party vendor. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions from any board member on this? I see none. I want to thank you for taking this step. I think it's very important that the public has complete faith in the actions that we all engage in at the county, and I think that having the fraud and the whistleblower notification programs is a really great step in that direction. Any member of the public have any comments or questions on this? Okay.
I wonder if there's anybody left.
We're being asked to adopt a resolution to approve the county's fraud reporting and whistleblower program policy. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move adoption of the resolution?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andy, a question. I know in other areas, we've been successful, for example, like with Empower and kind of managing other people's, you know, applications and the process for them. You had mentioned that this is kind of a costly kind of thing for smaller counties. If you are successful, would you be considering maybe offering the same type of technological tech process to other counties, kind of like what we do with Empower?
Well, one of the things during our research is that there are many departments that already have mechanisms to report fraud, waste, and abuse, when you think of just HHS and welfare fraud, just as one example. They are already getting calls of that nature. We may start getting calls of that nature in the whistleblower hotline, but we're definitely going to be evaluating those type of calls that we get in and figure out what other opportunities we can seek to achieve efficiency county-wide.
Well, yeah, well, I'm also talking about outside the county, kind of like what Empower's doing with different counties.
Oh, okay, outside the county.
Their applications for, you know, for the service.
So your suggestion is allowing other members outside Placer County to call into the hotline in the future?
To figure it out.
I think that's something we'll evaluate as part of Phase Two.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move to our second department item. This is a Health and Human Services item. This is the Mental Health Services Act Resident Housing Letter of Commitment to Meta Housing Corporation. Maureen Bowman presenting, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Today, I am very excited to ask you to authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign a letter of commitment to Meta Housing Corporation for $1,250,000 of Mental Health Services Act Dollars, MHSA, in exchange for setting aside 10 housing units, guaranteed housing placements for Placer County residents who have MHSA-eligible tenants, who are eligible tenants in the new construction known as Main Street Plaza Apartments that is within the city of Roseville's city limits. I'd like to mention that Kathy Denton, Program Manager, and our HHS Housing Expert, and Danielle Foster from the city of Roseville are both here. They'll help me with any detailed questions that you might have. Affordable housing remains a critical need in our county, as you know. We've been diligent about opportunities to develop housing opportunities for persons who are seriously mental illness, really since 2008, when we first got housing components assigned to us from the MHSA dollars. And we did assign some of those dollars to the California Housing and Finance Authority, CALHFA, for the development of housing opportunities in Placer County. That action resulted in the establishment of two permanent housing, and we spent about $2,384,000 to put these places, to put these programs in place. Timberline's a five-bedroom unit shared housing house, and Placer Street is a six-unit, two-bedroom, two-bath housing unit. Both of those are within the city limits of Auburn. These projects serve individuals struggling with serious mental illness and receive intensive mental health services. Both properties are owned by the Advocates for Mentally Ill Housing, and they have loans, operating, and rental subsidy reserves with CALHFA. In addition, ASOC uses our HUD housing to offset the subsidies, to help with subsidies of some of the rental units. And both projects have been successful, remain within budget, have low vacancy factors, and have satisfied residents. Currently, this board has recently approved a purchase agreement for 319 Maple Street with 18 studio apartments, which we're very excited about, and HHS will soon return the board requesting approval of the results of that RFP for the owner-operator and contract. So this newest housing opportunity was brought forth by the city of Roseville on behalf of Meta Housing Corporation. This project is located at 304 Washington Boulevard and 134 to 140 Main Street in Roseville, and Meta Housing Corporation is really an affordable housing developer that works towards securing and leveraging state and federal tax credits to develop affordable, mixed-income apartments and communities. This project proposes 77 units, 38 of which will be, provide supportive housing for veterans and other individuals with special needs, and the inclusion of approximately 3,500 square feet of commercial space, which will be on the ground level, and then it's a multi-unit, so the other housing will be on top, which is a unique design. And it's very special that they really want a community, so it's going to be a mixed community of different folks, which I think is really the best opportunity. So the letter of commitment went to our Mental Health Services Act leadership team for approval, and on January 13th, they enthusiastically supported the letter of commitment, and then the entire steering committee also was enthusiastic about it at their last meeting on January 27th. When I reviewed the request for $125,000 per unit, our comparison confirmed is on the low side of what a unit costs. The range is usually from $150,000 to $300,000, and although the county has paid less in some past agreements, it didn't really guarantee housing for those folks that have serious mental illness, who sometimes really have a hard time competing for that affordable housing in our community. A similar Yolo project, just for comparison, with the same population, was about $155,000 per unit. I'd also add that the city of Roseville is contributing $2.1 million in cash, in addition to the property that's estimated at about $1 million, and we'll also be working to get some potential project-based vouchers as part of that project. And I would just note that this is separate from the Sutter Moving to Zero effort, so that is a separate effort where Sutter is adding $1 million for Placer County's usage to find additional housing that will help our Hope Person Care Initiative. We're really excited to be working with the city of Roseville on a project that will be so positive for some of our most vulnerable residents. This expenditure will be included with your approval in the 1718 requested budget. Funding for this item is 100% from state funding, so there's no county general fund match, so I would enthusiastically recommend you approve this item, but I would be really happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Maureen. Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, thanks, Maureen. I just want to be clear as to where exactly this is. This is right at the corner of Main Street and Washington, right there where the little burger shack is.
It's actually sort of across two, a street, it's going to take up a...
That hole?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from any member of the board? Any member of the public wish to comment on this, please come forward.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors and Chairperson Montgomery. I'm Danielle Foster, I'm the Housing Manager for the city of Roseville. We are very excited and grateful for the opportunity to partner with the county on this project. I also want to relay, on behalf of Meta, their gratitude and your consideration of this funding. This site, as Supervisor Duran said, it starts on Washington and goes down Main Street, crosses over, there's that Placer Street right now, that will actually be turned into a pedestrian paseo, so folks can still meander through that area, but it will be closed off to cars. And then there's an existing building that's actually mostly condemned, the whole second floor is condemned at 134 Main Street. The first floor is only occupied by a small business, and the rest of the first floor is vacant, and it's been sort of a public nuisance light property for the city. So we're really excited to use some of our community development block grant funds to clear that blight and redevelop that property as part of this overall project. Very excited to get more affordable housing units in the city, but in addition to that, these will have extremely low-income units incorporated and supportive housing units. The first project in the city was supportive housing units. And as Maureen stated, really great opportunity to do a mixed community where we have folks with a range of incomes and a range of needs that can support each other and live together. So happy to answer any questions you have, thank you for your time.
Are there any businesses that are going to have to relocate because of this?
So, the one business that's there is the Fast Freddy's Pizzeria there on the corner of that building, and because we are using federal funds and this is, you know, a publicly-supported project, there will be relocation costs that are given to them, they will also get adequate noticing of the relocation.
And do you know whether or not Ian's going to be moving somewhere else in the...
I think there's discussions, but I'm not sure. The equipment right now is actually part of the property, it was owned by the owner of the site, so I think there's some discussions and negotiations occurring.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I just want to thank you and the city of Roseville for being just such a great partner in this. I mean, the challenges around mental health, homelessness, housing availability are almost overwhelming, and unless we all collaborate, as we're doing in this situation, we are just not going to get to a solution that serves us all. So really, truly, thank you very much. Please pass my thanks and the thanks of the board along to the powers that be at Roseville. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Any other members of the public have any comments on this? Maureen, did you have anything to add?
No.
All right, we're being asked to authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign a letter of commitment to Meta Housing Corporation for $1,250,000 of MHSA dollars. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, it being 9:46, we are going to move to our 9:45 timed item. The Board of Supervisors is being asked to present a proclamation designating February 2017 as Grand Jury Awareness Month in Placer County. I understand we have members of the grand jury here, please come forward. You don't just get to sit in the back row and hang out, I'm sorry. And before I read this, if you'd like to identify yourselves and just explain what your connection is with the grand jury, that would be terrific.
Good morning, my name is Jerry Henry, I'm currently the foreperson of the sitting grand jury.
Excellent.
Good morning, my name is Ed Lehman, I am currently the treasurer of the Placer County Grand Jurors Association.
Wonderful, welcome.
Good morning, I'm Karen Enghuzen, I served on the previous two grand juries, and I am now associated with the Placer County Grand Jurors Association. I want to thank you very much for doing this. It's nice to, I heard good words, that action was being taken because of a grand jury report. It's always nice to know that their hard work pays off.
Yes, thank you. And before I read the proclamation, I did want to mention that Placer County takes the work of the grand jury very seriously, as you saw today with the earlier item, and that I look forward to having a really collaborative working relationship and opportunities for full conversations around the issues that are of importance to members of our community who do raise these issues to the grand jury. I'm going to put my glasses on, and I will read this. This is a proclamation in the matter recognizing Placer, excuse me, I speak English, recognizing February 2017 as Grand Jury Awareness Month in Placer County. Whereas every year in each of California's 58 counties, 19 ordinary citizens take an oath to voluntarily serve a term of one year as grand jurors, and whereas grand juries have been in existence since the adoption of California's original constitution in 1849, 1850, and whereas grand juries conduct their investigations under the auspices of the Superior Court of California and have broad access to public officials, employees, records, and information. One of the most important functions of a grand jury is to review the operations of the officers, departments, and agencies of local government, and whereas grand juries are charged with investigating and reporting on local governmental operations to assure that their responsibilities are being fulfilled legally, efficiently, honestly, and in the best interest of the public. Grand juries serve as a watchdog authority and area well suited to the effective investigation of local governments because they are independent bodies, operationally separate from the entities and officials they investigate, and whereas the grand jury's fact-finding efforts result in reports that contain specific recommendations aimed at identifying problems and offering ways to improve government operations and enhance responsiveness, and whereas the hard work done by grand juries has a great effect on our communities and makes California a better place to live, and whereas the reward of being a grand juror is the satisfaction received from working with fellow residents and community members to improve local government for all, and whereas in 2009, Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger declared February to be the California Grand Jury Awareness Month, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the efforts of those jurors, both past and present, who have volunteered their time and service to the Placer County Grand Jury, now therefore be it proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the county of Placer on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held February... a regular meeting held February seven, twenty seventeen, proclaiming the month of February twenty seventeen as Grand Jury Awareness Month. And now we will have a photo. Please come forward and help me hold this. Okay, we're going to split the women up here.
I was going to say, we'll be the bookends.
Delicious creamy center. How's that?
Yeah, here we go.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Who would like to grab this? And do any of you have any comments that you would like to make before you take your leave?
We operate under secrecy.
You operate under... No comments. Perfect. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move to our next department item, it not yet being time for our next timed item. We're moving to agenda item eight, Public Works and Facilities. We have two items under this section of our agenda. Kevin, you're not Kevin Ordway. You are.
There we go.
Ken Graham presenting, and then Kevin.
There we go. Good morning, Board Chair and members of the board. My name is Ken Graham of the Department of Public Works and Facilities. Today, we're asking you to ratify a ward of a purchase order, number nine four six two one, with Tyker Construction, in an amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars for emergency construction that took place in response to some of the storm damage that occurred in early January. An earthen embankment was washed out in the storms of early Janu, in storms of early January. The embankment carried Morton Road. This, you can kind of see the top of the road. That pipe down at the bottom of that ravine is eight foot high, so it gives you a little bit idea that that is not taller than me, and so when you start adding it up, it's about forty feet of embankment over that culvert. Serves approximately fifteen residences are on the other side of that. And so to ensure access, I, acting as the road commissioner, exercised emergency authority under the Public Contracting Code to hire Tyker Construction to do three things. One was to open up a new roadway or to improve a private roadway. Here's a few more photos before we show this new access, showing that ravine. So right on the left-hand side, you'll see the yellow where the washout occurred and the access people had. The red line shows the detour. And all on the south side, on the bottom of that sheet, that is all private roadway. And so we've done some improvements to that roadway with Tyker Construction to ensure some level of access, not the best level of access, but access nevertheless. We've also asked to stabilize, we used them to stabilize the embankment also on the far right-hand side, where you'll see it says Emergency Embankment Stabilization Location to make sure we didn't lose that location also.
And that's a bridge, Ken. Is that correct, at that location?
That is a bridge at that location. That is correct. Although it is immediately adjacent to a culvert that goes underneath the railroad crossing. We also were looking to remove some of the old culvert that was in the middle of the channel because we just can't remove it because there's sediment in there, it's too heavy, and so we've left that in. We're not too worried about it because we can't get it out. Mother Nature's going to have a hard time getting out too, but that remains an issue out there. We're asking your board today to ratify the purchase order in accordance with Public Contracting Code, Section twenty-two zero five zero. It's important also to note that we've also, under the emergency procurement, also hired a hydraulic engineer and a geotechnical engineer, those that do not require your ratification because they are smaller contracts. But with that, asking you to ratify the award of that contract.
Kevin, did you have anything to add to this item?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Any member of the public wish to comment on this? Okay. I was hoping that someone would actually be here from Tyker today because I wanted to personally thank them for being so responsive and coming out. They've been out early, late weekends in really working to stabilize the difficult situation we find ourselves in out there. So please pass my thanks along, not just to Tyker, but to the other contractors with whom we've been working.
We will do that.
What is the pleasure of the board on this? All right. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Any objections? Okay. Moving on to item eight B.
And this is related. Today, we're asking you to authorize the Director of Public Works and Facilities, acting as the road commissioner, to advertise and award a contract to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for the repair work required on Morton Road, including necessary change orders in the aggregate amount, all of it, of three million dollars. The department has evaluated alternatives to replacing the roadway on Morton Road. We've looked at permanent solutions. We've looked at temporary solutions. On the permanent solution side, we've looked at various repairs. We've talked about how there was this culvert, obviously not large enough, otherwise it wouldn't have all blown away. We've looked at alternatives of having bigger culverts, concrete culverts as well as bridges. We have come to the conclusion that a temper, a permanent pre-cas, so bridges actually made off-site, brought onto site, and placed on-site, to be the best alternative for the long term. And in terms of costs, all the costs of all the alternatives were relatively the same. We believe this one's superior because it definitely shouldn't have this issue ever happen again. So in addition to that, we've also looked at some temporary solutions, about temporary bridges, what we found in those for the cost of four to five hundred thousand dollars. We could try to arrange some sort of temporary bridge, but probably those also would take time to construct. Even, we've looked at railcar bridges, we've looked at Bailey Bridges, which are kind of the army segmental types of bridges. And so at this point, we're not recommending that. We're recommending we keep the existing roadway open, and we focus our intention in getting the permanent roadway done. We, if we go out to bid, we're intending to go out to bid by next week, assuming your board approves this, we hope that we can have this bridge completed by June. So that is what we're focused on. The estimated cost is three million dollars. The funding right now is coming from the road fund. We are expecting that we may have to use our reserves, our road fund reserves, to make that happen. We are looking to get disaster funding, either state and/or federal, to help offset those costs, but we're committed regardless to getting the work done. And so with that, we're asking you to authorize me to advertise and award the construction contract at a maximum amount of three million dollars to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder.
Thank you.
And be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, I know under normal circumstances, we don't consider the highest bidder or time, and I was wondering if there is any, if you've considered that basing, you know, the award of the bid to the one that can mobilize the quickest under, and accomplish the same thing.
We are, and I'm going to turn this over to Kevin. We are looking to have, have time be a factor here, and so Kevin might be able to explain.
Yeah, we're looking at a procurement process that Caltrans uses called A-plus-B bidding, where we assign a dollar value to time, to days, and then the contractor will bid the project, but when we evaluate, and when they bid the project, they'll also give us the amount of working days they're going to take to build it. So if someone comes in and says, you know, they're the low bidder, but they say it's going to take a hundred days, and let's say the number two bidder is higher, but they say we're going to do it in forty days, depending on the dollar value we assign to that day, the higher bidder may actually be determined to be the best value.
Right, because I know a couple, what was it, ten, fifteen years ago, a bunch of bridges washed out on I-5, and C.C. Myers went in there and knocked them all out, and, you know, like, it was just an incredible amount of, quickly, he got those things done. He used railcars or something like that, but, but I was, just the thought had crossed my mind that, you know, in this particular instance, because it's not, it's an emergency situation, that we may want to use something different procurement-wise to get it done now, so.
So we hope this will make it between the, what we're asking for today. That will save some time. We're hoping some of this will encourage contractors to show how they can do it a little bit quicker. Not the same as maybe what some of the work C.C. Myers did, particularly after Loma Prieta and some of the earthquake work, but we are hoping, we do believe time matters, and we do want to get it done as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any member of the board? Any member of the public have a question or comment on this? Okay. Kevin, I just want to thank you and the rest of Team Kevin, because there's a number of Kevins who've been working on this, for all your efforts on it. You guys have been working, I'm not going to say day and night, but very, very long hours to address this issue.
Well, thank you. We also have Matt Randall, our in-house bridge guy, who's in charge of our bridge program, and he's been working extensively on the bridge design, and Jeff Apps is leading the roadway design, so we have a whole team of people working on this.
More than just Kevins.
Yeah, more than just Kevins.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the board? Oh, did not hear it. All right, we have a motion. Did you guys hear it?
[inaudible]
Okay. Perfect. Excellent. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. We have completed our department items. We have nothing until ten-ten for timed items. Jerry, did you want to take us to closed session?
The board will now return to closed session for a conference with legal counsel to discuss the two litigation cases set out on page three of the agenda. The board will also have a conference with its labor negotiators.[1223.14] The Board will also have a conference with its labor negotiators.
We're back from closed session. Jerry, did you want to give us a report out?
Sure. The Board has returned from closed session where they had a conference with legal counsel to discuss two litigation cases. Carrickman Martin versus County plaster. The Board authorized the defense and indemnity of the county employee, now former county employee involved or served, named in that case. And the Board also waived the conflict to allow the county council to represent the former employee and the county. And Eris versus County plaster. The Board heard the report and gave direction to council. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators on the status of negotiations with PPEO. No action was taken.
Thank you. We will now move to our ten-ten timed item. This is a Public Works and Facilities item. This is a proposed annexation into County Service Area 28, Zone 2A3. This says Sundance Industrial Park, but I'm pretty sure we mean Sunset, don't we?
Good morning, Chairman Montgomery, members of the Board. Andy Darrow with Public Works and Facilities. You're correct, the name of this project has changed over time, but this is the original name that it had.
Okay.
So I'm here to request that your Board hold a public hearing to consider the annexation of parcel number 021-283-020 into the boundaries of County Service Area 28, Zone 2A3, Sunset. The property is located on Athens Avenue in the Sunset Industrial area. Fraji Design Group, as the agent of the property owner, Athens 33 LLC, is requesting annexation of the 33.78 acre parcel in order to connect to public sewer out there as part of their project. If approved, the applicant will be required to pay the annexation fee in effect at the time they choose to make payment. And that current annexation fee is $6,550,000. at the time they choose to make payment. And that current annexation fee is $6,553. I believe it's $194 per acre out there currently. Staff supports this request. So, in order to move forward, I request that your board hold a public hearing, and at the end of the hearing, adopt the resolution in the staff report to annex this parcel into the boundaries of County Service Area 28, Zone 2A3, Sunset. And with that, I can certainly answer any questions.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so I am opening the public hearing on this item. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this during the public hearing? Any board comments during the public hearing? All right. Closing the public hearing. I understand that we do have a ballot on this, is that correct? Can the clerk read us the results of that? No ballot on this one? Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're now going to move to our 10-20 item, also Public Works and Facilities. This is an annexation, excuse me, into Sewer Maintenance District 1, Chi-Hom property. I am so sorry, I just completely massacred someone's name.
Thank you once again, Andy Darrow with Public Works and Facilities. I'm here to request that your board hold a public hearing again to consider annexation of parcel number 076-271-012 in the Sewer Maintenance District 1. The property is located at 5040 Stanley Drive in the Christian Valley area. Paul Chornhome, I believe it is, is requesting annexation of the 1.04 acre parcel in order to connect to public sewer out there. And if approved, the applicant will be required to pay the annexation fee in effect at the time they choose to make payment, and that current payment is $6,344. Once again, staff supports this request. In order to move forward, I request that your board hold a public hearing, and at the end of the hearing, adopt the resolution in the staff report to annex parcel number 076-271-012 into Sewer Maintenance District Number 1. And I can certainly answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this item? Any board member comments? Closing the public hearing. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Andy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move to our 10-30 timed item. This is a Community Development Resources Agency item. This is a third-party appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a tentative map. This is the Dedurka Minor Land Division. Looks like we have Melanie Jackson and EJ Avaldi.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members. EJ Avaldi with the Planning Services Division. Today, we bring forward you the third-party appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a tentative parcel map known as a Dedurka Minor Land Division. Melanie Jackson will be presenting this item this morning.
Thank you. Welcome, Melanie.
... of the Dedurka Minor Land Division that was approved by the Planning Commission. The subject property is located at the end of Eagle Ridge Road in the Eagle Ridge subdivision. The property consists of approximately 26 acres, is situated on a ridge line of the American River Canyon. The majority of the property is comprised of steep slopes and tree coverage, and the property is developed with a single family and a secondary residence. Property is zoned farm with a building site designation of five acres and a planned residential development designation of .2 units per acre. The surrounding properties are zoned residential forestry, farm, and open space. The property to the north are owned by the United States, and they border the north and west property lines of the parcel. The applicant is requesting a minor land division approval for a 20, or a two-up parcel split with, of a 26 acre property. One parcel would be approximately 21 acres, and the other one would be approximately five acres. They would be split such that there would be a 20 acre parcel that would contain the existing single-family residence and a five acre parcel that would contain the secondary residence. An MND was prepared, mitigated negative declaration was prepared for this project that disclosed any environmental impacts, the property itself, and mitigated appropriately. Following the mitigated negative declaration, this project was taken to the parcel review chairman and was approved by the parcel review chairman on September 15, 2016. That approval was appealed to the Planning Commission, and on November 10, 2016, it was heard by the Planning Commission. After discussing the appeal and hearing from the appellant and the applicant, as well as staff, the Planning Commission took action to deny the third-party appeal and to approve the conditions of approval, adopt the findings, and again, adopt the mitigated negative declaration for the project. Moving on to the appeal, there were nine issues that were presented by the appellant. I'm going to go through each one by one. On November 21, the Planning Commission's decision was appealed by Michael Garabedian on behalf of Friends of the North Fork and Plaster Group Sierra Club. The issues include visual impacts, establishment of the precedent for development of canyon rims, prohibition for the division of the parcels once recorded, lack of CAL Fire, disturbance to canyon rims, lack of prevention and fire planning, and an inadequate will serve letter, as well as building envelope locations causing fire hazards to both the public and the property owners. On November 21, this appeal was heard by the Planning Commission, and it was, it was denied and approved by the Planning Commission. So, I'll take number one. Project's visual impacts are not identified, addressed, or mitigated, including the aesthetic impacts to the Auburn State Recreation Area, the North Fork American River Canyon, and the Forest Hill Divide Community Plan, five acre canyon rib and ridge from the Long Point Fuel Break Trail to the Shertail Canyon. The Forest Hill Divide Community Plan includes policies related to visual character. The proposed project is subject to these policies, and this was discussed in the environmental document, and it was mitigated appropriately. This was done in part by and supported by a visual study that showed the visual impacts from the North Fork of the river, and specifically identified two building envelopes that were provided on the site plan that were meant to minimize any visual impacts that would result from the secondary parcel, the five acre parcel with the secondary residence. Having reviewed this, staff determined that visual impacts were less than significant, and determined that there was no merit to the assertion that the visual impacts were not identified or addressed or mitigated appropriately. The second issue, the appellant asserts that the project has the potential to set a precedent for further adjustments in land divisions on the properties that would be recorded, and it would also cause impacts to the visually sensitive areas of the American River Canyon. Staff reviewed this as well and determined that because all projects are looked at separately, this in fact would not cause a precedent because all of those projects would be looked at in the future at the time somebody applied. So therefore, it would not set a precedent, and each of these would also be reviewed as part of an environmental document, mitigated and conditioned appropriately. The Planning Commission did not fully understand its option to condition the project to further, for further division of the parcels, and that this should have been prohibited. This is item number three. The appellant stated at the planning, that the Planning Commission had the authority to add a condition to the parcel map such that the divided parcels could no longer be divided after it is recorded. However, at the Planning Commission, the chair asked county council if the subdivision map act would allow such a condition, and council advised that it would not be a good idea to put this prohibition on the property as part of a condition of approval because there's a requirement for a nexus between the project impacts and any future impacts as a result of the division, and that it would restrict property owner rights. And so therefore, the parcel, the Planning Commission decided that they would not place that condition, and because they asked the county council, they did have a full understanding of their ability to add that condition of approval and chose not to. Number four, the parcel review committee chairman imposed a requirement at the parcel review committee hearing that a note be placed on the recorded parcel map that discloses that, discloses that the properties are located in high fire hazard area. This in fact was requested by the parcel review chairman, however, is not yet placed on the map because the parcel review committee chairman and the Plaster, or the Planning Commission's decision to approve the project has been set aside as a part of this appeal, and the map will actually be finalized with that condition, as it is a condition of approval, once this project is, if this project is approved, and it will also be part of the map check by surveying after it becomes, it is processed. CAL Fire, this is number five, CAL Fire is responsible for reviewing the proposed project, and there's no evidence that CAL Fire reviewed the subject Minor Land Division. In fact, staff has had many conversations with CAL Fire internally and has discussed it in detail to determine what the fire, the impacts are, how it should be conditioned. We also spoke with Ian Gao, who is the chief of the Forest Hill Fire District, and he determined he did add a couple of conditions which would mitigate for any fire hazards. And he also spoke with CAL Fire. As stated, we did too, and it was determined that they were fully involved in the Minor Land Division and spoke where necessary, and this was taken to, into account when putting together the conditions of approval for the project, and therefore, this was approved appropriately with CAL Fire's input. Number six, there is a lack of fire prevention and protection planning factored into the project. This relates back to number five. This was thoroughly reviewed by Ian Gao of the Forest Hill Fire Protection District and by CAL Fire. And during that review, they took into account fire protection planning and factored this into the project and any conditions of approval that applied. And it was determined that there was no merit in the assertion that the lack of fire prevention and protection planning was factored into the project. And staff also concluded that the project is not lacking in this. Number seven, planning staff and the Planning Commission erroneously relied on a will serve letter memorandum for the purpose of addressing fire prevention issues because the Forest Hill Fire Protection District no longer has a fire marshal due to insufficient funding. CAL Fire reviewed this project, and so did Ian Gao of Forest Hill Fire Protection District, and they preserved the will, or provided the will serve letter for this project. Forest Hill Fire Protection District Chief Ian Gao reviewed this project, and he does manage the Forest Hill Fire Protection District and is fully qualified to review this project. And therefore, staff has determined that this was appropriately, the will serve letter was appropriately prepared, and that the staff could in fact rely on it for the purpose of fire safety. Number eight, the building envelopes identified on the 21.6 acre parcel would result in increased fire hazards because of their locations. As stated, the proposed project was reviewed by the Fire, Forest Hill Fire Protection District and CAL Fire. Both entities were provided with the current tentative map, which depicts both the building envelopes. In their review, fire personnel considered possible fire hazards of the proposed project in its entirety, including the location of the building envelopes. The fire districts chose not to require any modifications to the map or to add any conditions of approval because a will serve letter was provided, and a will serve letter was provided, and as a result, staff has concluded that possible fire hazards resulting from the location of these envelopes were adequately reviewed. And number nine, an additional residence on the five acre parcel would endanger the public because of possible evacuation complications due to the parcel's access from the hairpin turn on Ponderosa Way. This is the hairpin turn on Ponderosa Way. It was reviewed by CAL Fire as well as the Forest Hill Fire Protection District, and it was determined that there was adequate access for the purposes of fire protection and evacuation, and that there was no merit in this issue as defined by the appellant. In conclusion, staff recommends that the board supervisors deny the third-party appeal submitted by Friends of the North Fork and Plaster Group Sierra Club, to adopt the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for the project, to uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve the Dedurka Minor Land Division, to allow for a 21 acre parcel and a five acre parcel, and to adopt the findings as approved by the Planning Commission. That, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from any member of the board before we hear from the appellant? Jack, would you turn your microphone on, please?
I have a question to our legal counsel. I've read through these documents, and I only see one citation here to Oro Finegold versus County of El Dorado. Does Oro apply here?
Not really. And what the appellant is, is actually asking the board to do is to analyze this project as if it was another project, as if it was a five-unit project instead of a two-unit.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I read Oro, and my take on Oro is that it's completely different than what we're talking about here. So, okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, we will give some time to the appellant. Mr. Garabedian, please come forward.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Supervisors. Michael Garabedian, speaking for Plaster Group Sierra Club and Friends of the North Fork. And Melanie, thank you for your report, very good report. To us, it's a jumping off point really, but a good jumping off point. Whether we agree or not, I think there's, we appreciate your efforts. We're here this morning because the Dedurka project is on the mile-long ridge that was mentioned from the Long Point Fuel Break to Shertail Canyon. And we're focusing today on, on two issues, the visual treasure that this canyon is and that this project would impact, and that we have here an extreme wildland urban interface, WUI, Wildland Urban Interface, with the highest, of WUI of highest fire severity zones where fire returns frequently in human terms in this canyon and area. And specifically for this appeal, this project, we have rim and ridge line development the county general plan requires to be managed to protect the visual and natural resources. That here includes project significant impacts on the Auburn State Recreation Area, canyon recreation, public and private interest, forest and timber and wildfire. Now, this is in the designated view shed of the Forest Hill Divide Community Plan, something that should indicate the need for an EIR, much more analysis than has been done. It's also, the Forest Hill Divide Community Plan also identified the need to do visual design guidelines for the, for this view zone, and we're still waiting for that and hope we can get that. Now, also, this is, this, the steep canyon with heavy vegetation, the negative deck identifies, says there's heavy vegetation, but doesn't deal with where it is, or, but the slides, we'll look at some more slides or handouts that will give a picture of that if it's not clear already. And there's a heavy concentration of people here, you know, a million or so people a year going into the ASRA, and the community wildfire protection plan that was done after the Forest Hill Divide Plan identified recreation as a fire ignition source affecting the Forest Hill Divide and its community wildfire protection plan. And of course, many of those visitors are below this rim in, in the area. So, there are three kinds of issues that converge here that we feel need more attention. There are several sciences involved. There's, there are the views and special view shed, and there is a, there are topographical issues that are unique, unique to this area among the county. The sciences here are the science of fire behavior, understanding how it behaves, especially on ridges and rims, practices of fire prevention, which do not have, there's on ridges and rims, practices of fire prevention, which do not have, there's no evidence they've been applied at all. Maybe there've been conversations about that, but there's nothing in here that tells us why, points out, these are the fire prevention issues, and this, this is what, why it's adequately developed. The science of engineering, fire engineering and ecology. So we're here, this appeal brings to you and calls attention to your, to your board, to you, the board for this, but also other levels of government, some which you can see we've contacted, one or two, and brings to the attention of public opinion, which, which you represent. And we believe that the staff report trivializes these concerns and proposes that you ignore your responsibilities to the public health, safety and welfare. Now, the-
Supervisor Duran.
Welcome, welcome then.
Yeah. When you say trivializes, so you admit that there is information that addresses these issues, it's just not as developed as you would like it to be developed?
Right.
Is that a violation of SEQA?
Pardon me? I, I don't have, I'm not here to-
And of itself a violation of SEQA?
I'm not here to give legal opinions on SEQA.
You're, you're arguing for a, a, a expanded review and, and you're arguing for an EIR, and I'm assuming that you're, you're trying to argue some type of a fair argument here.
What we're here to argue is for a dialogue that needs to go further than what the staff has done. And I'm not, I, I, I am not, on SEQA, I rely on legal experts. I don't make legal opinions.
The, the time for dialogue, Mr. Garabedian, would have, should have occurred long ago.
It has.
Okay.
We need more.
Well, okay.
But we, we're hoping you will help engage that.
Do you have any other authority that support what you're saying aside from this Oro case?
I'm not here to argue the law.
Yeah, and Supervisor Duran, I suggest we let Mr. Garabedian finish his presentation and then we can ask questions after that.
All right.
And I would just say this, that if we wanted to explore legal issues like that, we would go to legal counsel and say, do we have a case or not? I mean, I'm not here to say we have a case or not. Thank you. So two points that are key, one, one that's been mentioned, the, the lack of a fire marshal there. The Forest Hill Divide had a fire marshal and he, his funding was on the edge, on the edge, and now, and now he's gone. Now, the county, in, in the recent contract renewal with CAL FIRE, is contracted with and you're paying CAL FIRE for fire prevention and land use planning services, but planning staff and the planning commission have not used or demanded the application and documentation of what they've talked about. They haven't brought them to the commission. I don't know if they're here today. It'd be great if they were here today. Instead, as noted, the parcel review and staff hang their hats on the will serve letter and, there are conversations they've had. And I would sum up their approach to say that as well informed as they might be, the public also needs to be informed. And my experience with fire prevention is they aren't identifying those issues and addressing them. In other words, ignorance is bliss, and they're asking you to take the same approach, legal issues aside. Now, planning's visual mitigations are a problem here. As mentioned, the two, two building envelopes right next to the road raise issues, we feel. We disagree whether, that there are issues there. But even their general mitigation for this and other projects, that for screening, vegetation screening is, is a fire, you know, needs to be addressed from a fire, you know, what, what is the effect, for instance, of defensible space in an area like this? And how does that conflict or not conflict with, with, between fire and, fire mitigation and visual mitigation? The envelopes are clearly above steep, heavily vegetated slopes. There's a real obvious fire hazard here. There's no, no indication here of recognizing the value of a number of fire issues, and I'll just mention three, that embers drive fires, that the primary house is among the worst possible fire positionings available, and that the, the county's failure to have visual standards for visual and fire hazard written into the secondary home ordinance, that this allows a second, allowed a secondary home that's in a bad fire and a bad visual location. So our primary urging would be with that the applicant, withdraw the application because the county, the fire district, CAL FIRE, the fire district, SEQA are not being used, not doing their jobs here. And there's a fair argument, we believe, that this may have visual and fire impacts. So we, we suggest that you do several things, and I'll explain a little more. We hope that you would deny the application, and if you didn't deny it, that you would limit further land division as been mentioned, and that, for instance, the applicant says he's not, he doesn't intend to build a secondary home on his parcel, well, that should be, he should be willing to do a deed restriction or something, something to that effect. So, so, and if nothing, we hope you would send it back or open up an opportunity for dialogue, as I mentioned. Now, this, this, this issue has been at least nine years in developing for Friends of the North Fork and more recently for the Sierra Club. If, if approved today, this would be the first final county decision on a new development in the Forest Hill Divide on that five mile rim. So it is not a minor thing. It may seem minor, but it's, it's very important in terms of cumulative impacts. Meanwhile, we've had the 2014 King Fire that jumped 17 miles, and I was at the, the meeting after that that jumped, the meeting in Forest Hill, because that was threatened, potentially threatened, as well as other communities. That was a wake-up call, but by and large, the county is asleep. I'm not saying that everybody's asleep or that you're asleep, but this is the time to deal with. We have the Trail Hood Fire, we had the fire that burned through weed, a flat area. We need to address these issues. We've had our own, the 49 Fire, this area, the county has. And what we're missing, what we don't have, we don't have a description of fire history in the staff report or in the, in the NACDEC. We don't have mass, past map fire perimeters. We don't have fire history in the ASRA or in this area that is relevant to this. The cost, the cost of this kind of development, not properly managed, you know, it costs to fight the fires. There are property losses, injuries to residents, fire restoration costs, insurance rates, if you can get insurance, and I appreciate the county's work on that. So I'm gonna close on the, my comments and then look at a slide or two with you to ask four questions and hope that we will answer them in the negative here today. Do we have fire severity zone maps that the county is not paying attention to, like this project doesn't? We hope the answer is no. And if Placer County won't manage its WUI, can we expect fire prevention in the location and design of the WUI development to be imposed on us? Let's say no in dialogue here. Will Placer County continue to be no fire prevention for new development management? Or for new development? Let's say no. And shall we continue to deal with new development as if entirely or partially or largely it is already built? And we hope the answer would be no. Are there any other slides? Well, I have a handout which shows slides that were part of, before the planning commission, but I guess aren't in this particular package. Though this, this slide shows the proposal, land division, land division and building envelopes. So what you have before you, the, the one with three paragraphs at the top, it shows the, the Eagle Ridge, and you can see that, that, where that sharp bend is, the, the hairpin turn, that the picture we saw earlier is on Ponderosa Way to the left of the open ridge. And just about half an inch to the right of the end of the, is, is maybe three quarters of an inch is the secondary home. And then you can see up on the ridge, the, the primary home. And then on the back is a, a projection of the, the parcel that's also up on the wall, the parcel boundaries. And I think anyone can see that this is a terribly susceptible area for fire. It just seems rather evident. And it demonstrates the very heavily vegetated area throughout, and then very clearly where the building, the building envelopes are proposed to be on either side of the, the two red, well, the red building envelope on the left, and then the, the one on the left and right are in the, in the path of very heavy vegetation and next to the, next to the road. So what I hope you would do is allow us to answer questions and discuss these issues with you. Like to address any questions you may have and figure out if we can take this somewhere from here.
Okay. I will bring this back to the board for any questions, comments, concerns.
Do you want to let the applicants be heard?
Oh, I am so sorry. Yes. My apologies. Please, the applicants wanted to come forward and present on this.
Good morning. I'll, I have a pretty bad cold, so I'll see how far I can-
Oh, well, I have cough drops.
Chris, I have, thank you very much. Christine Johnson with Clear Path Land Development. We are representing Mr. Dodurka and we prepared the map. I would just probably, I would just like to thank the staff for doing such a thorough job of looking at this. As you know, we were continued at our first hearing due to Mr. Garabedian's concerns about the view shed. We came back with these areas on the map that by contours and elevation, we determined would be out of the view shed. Obviously, if you look at those envelopes, they're way larger than a house site would be. But these are the areas we determined that would not be seen by the, you know, that would address his comments adequately. Also, I believe the fire conditioning is to make it a fire safe area around any dwelling, any future dwelling with the, what do you call that, the cleared area around the building?
Defensible space.
Defensible space, thank you. That would obviously be taken into account if indeed ever a house, a secondary unit was built on these. And I thank you for your time looking at this, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
So, so your client owns the property, correct?
Yes, yes.
And your client assisted to address Mr. Garabedian's concerns?
No, we, the, we did that. We determined that based on the elevations and the contours, what would be the best way to address that concern. I consulted with him, certainly.
Right, right.
Based to his, his input, but we're the surveyors.
Exactly. Right, right, right. So, so you assisted that?
Yes.
To address that?
Yes.
And, and you're, I'm assuming your client was under, under no obligation to do anything?
No, none whatsoever. That was something we did in response.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the reminder, Kirk. I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments from any member of my board? I see no lights here. I would, I just would like a few clarifications on a few things, and I think, Melanie, I'll probably ask you. Mr. Garabedian has referred to new development in this. Is there anything in this action today that is actual new development?
In this action, I think what he's referring to is, once this property is split, we have a secondary residence on the five acre property. We have a single-family residence on the 20 acre property. Once this is recorded, the five acre parcel could construct a regular, single-family residence at the desired size, and then the 20 acre parcel, they would be able, excuse me, to construct a secondary residence.
And what would the process be in that? They would have to come back for building permits?
That's correct.
A, a new analysis of whether this was subject to SEQA in any way, shape or form?
Well, they would rely at the time of building permit, which is what they would need at the time that they were going to put these structures in. The staff that reviews this in the building department and at the front counter, they would look, they would rely on this parcel map as far as where it could be built and the SEQA analysis. And this, since this is recorded, they would be pulling the map and they would see those building envelopes and would be required to build within those envelopes and nowhere else.
And what would the role of the fire department, whether it's CAL FIRE or Forest Hill Fire, be in that potential future development?
Well, those are kind of prescribed as part of the building department review. There are also significant regulations put forth by California states that requires certain fire protection to be followed. And so that would be reviewed, and it's also part of the actual building review in that they have to have the defensible space, but also fire sprinklers. There are several other regulations, and so that would be reviewed and then made, they would make sure that was part of the construction of the project.
So that would be at the time that this future potential construction would occur?
Correct.
And I want to make sure that I've not completely lost my mind. We are talking about two existing structures on this piece of property, and the action that we're being asked to look at today is a, an MLD?
That's correct.
I'm gonna open it up to the public, see if the public has any comments on this before I make my final comments on this. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this? Okay. Seeing none. Mr. Garabedian, was there anything you wanted to add to this before I bring it back to the board?
Yes, I would, though I don't know if it's necessary to mention it. But of course, secondary homes are ministerial. There's no ability to deny them in terms of the kind of analysis we're talking about here. Basically, the fire prevention decisions, the major ones that could affect and help with fire prevention, as well as the visual, visual are being made right now. So the, the concern is that you're basically approving secondary homes when you approve this. The way not to do that would be not to permit the split. The problem with the secondary home ordinance is it, it doesn't have any kind of a zoning mechanism to say, we don't want secondary homes in, in this, in this kind of dangerous situation. This, this would put secondary homes in a highly dangerous situation. There could be ways to mitigate that in the secondary home ordinance about how, you know, maybe they should be required to be attached to the house, or who knows? So, so you don't have those kind of, that kind of analysis that's going to be done here, but especially in the fire prevention. I mean, it's, once you approve this, for secondary homes, it's too late. And then there's the question of further land divisions. You know, there's, there's a letter in the file from Mr. Rosasco saying that there's a potential of five different building sites on the 26 acre parcel. The letter doesn't say they have that right, but there's little question that, you know, the future owner or the present owner might come back to do further divisions, and this is not the place we want more land divisions for fire prevention purposes and visual purposes.
Okay.
And we know from the analysis that there are only certain, you know, two places on the 20 acre, remaining 20 acre parcel that might not be visual. So if there're going to be other divisions on their, other divisions, they're going to be highly visible, and this is the time to say no.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Duran?
No, I was just gonna say, you know, I, I do appreciate what, the ability for folks to weigh in on, on these types of things. I think we went through a process. I think that process gave us this, you know, recommendation to the planning commission, and I think the planning commission did their job on it. I think we addressed what needed to be addressed in, in this, and, and I don't see this proceeding to be a place where we have dialogue. In those extraordinary cases, and I can only point to one, where we were having an appeal and we were discussing a gate, when I think all of the supervisors recognized that there was an opportunity to do some, some things that were unique in the interests of the community that was there. We entertained the- We entertained the, this whole dialogue thing, and hopefully that will lead to some type of agreement down the road, although I hear there's a hiccup or two. But as far as I'm concerned, I don't see anything that warrants us expanding what we already do or providing more, more analysis and more, and more time to this particular issue. You know, and further, I think, you know, this is the reason why people don't want to build stuff, you know, is because it just takes forever to do something. There's always something, there's always an argument out there that this could happen, this could happen, this could happen. I have seen no evidence in the record here that says that these things are even issues. So, that's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you. Supervisor Yular?
Yeah, I'm just prepared to make a motion.
Okay, I do have a few comments, which is, Mr. Garabedian identified a number of issues that I think are legitimate issues and that we are all concerned about. However, I don't think this is the appropriate venue to address them on a project-by-project basis. The county is moving forward with a new community wildfire protection plan, and we're going to be moving forward with a climate action plan. I believe we're in the early phases of updating our general plan, and I think the issues around, however you want to call it, visuals, aesthetics, ridgeline protection, and fire danger are frankly much more appropriately addressed within those processes than through individual appeals of individual projects. So, I will be voting to deny the appeal today. Anything else from any of my board members? Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that we deny the third-party appeal, adopt the mitigated NAGDEC modified, as well as mitigation monitoring program based on the attached finding, and uphold the planning commission's decision to approve the minor land division subject to the following, the findings that are attached.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. I believe this is just a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. Motion pauses. Thank you all for coming today and having completed all business. We stand adjourned.